Okay, I'm gonna gavel in the executive session. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the previous meeting. Please move, I need a second. Second, all in favor? Hi.
I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't here.
It doesn't matter, it's the minutes, you can still vote on the minutes, you can if you want. So, four to one, this is approved. Uh, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the approval of secretary's fees. To approve, please move. Second, somebody's gotta pay Jody. Okay, all in favor? Hi, any opposition, abstentions, not for that one, you get unanimous. Okay, all set, thank you.
I was just gonna tell you, Mr. Chairman, you're all set.
Good afternoon all, and welcome to the zoning board of appeals for April, April 4th, of 2024. I'm just gonna state this out loud because I do it at every meeting. If there is something that has been either continued or withdrawn, and on our continued docket number 10, 380 Pine Creek Avenue, has been withdrawn. So if you are here or online and have any business with that item, have no business today. So, we are officially called to order, and when a matter is first called, the applicant or his or her agent will come up and present the case, once the call is complete. Originals of any petition should be given to our clerk, Jody. Copies of the petition should be then distributed to the board. After the applicant's presentation, all interested persons in favor of the application will come forward and speak. After those in favor have spoken, those in opposition will be heard. The applicant or his or her agent may then address the comments made by those in opposition. Little brief tidbit on that. If anyone is here in opposition to a case, please keep your comments on task. Those comments should not tell us about the history of the neighborhood, those comments should not tell us about any personal, anything between you and the applicant, we need specific reasons as to why you are, why you're opposing it, and the same thing in favor. And I will also ask that, in the course of your presentation of your case, uh, you must present your hardship. That hardship must be specifically tied to your property. We all have heartstrings that everybody likes to tug on, you know, we need more space for this, we need more this, we have more kids. So do we, this board is specifically tasked and defined by its responsibility to zoning regulations and how the property itself will be affected and the effect of the surrounding area by the property. So that's how we're gonna make our decision. Second, this meeting is being taped as required by state law. It is important that we be able to understand the tape. Therefore, only one person may speak at a time, and anyone who speaks must come forward, speak into the microphone, and give his or her name and address. We welcome the comments of all interested persons, but we must exercise discretion in making sure that your comments again are on point. And if you're too far off the point, I will reserve my right as chairman to restrict those comments at any time. Third, applicants and interested persons may remain in attendance after the public hearing for the executive session. Find out what is decided. Or you may call the zoning office tomorrow to find out what was decided. Fourth, if an application or a waiver is granted, the waiver is not valid if the notice is not recorded. The applicant must bring a check in the amount of $60 made out to the town of Fairfield to the zoning office on Wednesday or later, following the meeting, for proper recording of the notice of filing. Any waiver involving construction of a new dwelling and additions or exterior alterations will require an as-built survey prior to the issuance of certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Generally stated this, but I wanna just state it again, decorum is required in my hearings at all times. Nice, be courteous, don't speak while anyone else is speaking, and please do not speak until you are requested to speak. I get tripped up all the time, so if I get tripped up, I apologize, and I reserve the right to screw up your name at any chance. Um, so, we're going to go ahead and get started with our continued docket. As I stated, 380 Pine Creek Avenue has been withdrawn. We're gonna move on to number two, 130 Lakeview Drive, map 73, parcel 74. Petition of Anthony Alexander Bowman for variance of the zoning regulation, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 40 feet, proposing 17.6 feet. Permission to construct an in-ground pool, premises is R3 zone.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board of appeals, my name is David Varesvi. I'm a landscape architect, registered in the state of Connecticut with Rock Spring Design Group. My address is 15 Spring Road in Fable, Connecticut, here on behalf of the owners. And today we're here to discuss a 4.8 acre site within the R3 zone, it's an existing residential property on the corner of Lakeview Drive and Short Hill Avenue. The proposed project is the construction of a 15 by 30 foot in-ground pool that is partially within the street line setback. Uh, we are requesting relief from section 5.2, 4.3, which is a street line setback of 40 feet. Uh, the reduction is, from the street line is, um, from 40 feet to 28.6. It's a reduction, um, okay, from this, reduction when it refers to, the 17.6 is off of the property line, not off of the street line. The street line's 10 feet off of that, just for clarification purposes. Um, the existing site is a corner lot, as mentioned. Um, there's, there's a sloping backyard, sort of a rubble wall along the Short Hill Lane side, and plantings along the back neighbor, and partially along the Short Hill Lane side. The, we are requesting this variance due to several, we believe we have several hardships. Uh, one is the site is generally topographically challenged, um, and if I can share my screen, show you some stuff. I'm sharing here. So this is our proposed plan on the screen. And this is a view of the front of the house from a few drive, sort of gonna scroll through real quick. This is the frontage from along Short Hill Lane, you can see there's some plantings on the corner, and you can start to see some evergreen plantings around the back of the property in this tree here, to the rubble wall that I was referring to. Uh, the property is sloping all the way through the backyard, um, from the back corner, back here, through the area where the proposed pool is. Um, so, pretty much anywhere that we look at doing this project, we're gonna be in a sloped area. This area right here, where we've got the proposed pool, is the flattest area on the property where we have to do the least amount of grading, we, in this area, we would create a balanced cut-fill situation. Additionally, if we go back and we'll get the, the view of the overall property, um, we believe this is a corner lot. It is affected by the street line setbacks on two sides, 40 feet, um, which impacts it. But one of the unusual things about this lot, it is roughly trapezoidal shaped. So it's not a square, it's not a triangle, it's a trapezoid, more like a diamond. Um, the town of Fairfield roads, um, the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Short Hill Lane actually come onto the property at the point of the property. Um, and then Short Hill Lane actually comes in at an acute angle. So, most roads come in at a 90-degree angle, this road comes in on an acute angle. And that effect of that is the street line setback dives deeply into the backyard of the property. If this was a, a more normal shaped lot, say a square lot, on a, on a corner, we would easily meet the setback in this location. If this was a normal interior lot with a 10-yard side yard setback for an accessory use, we would easily meet that, that setback. But the sort of unique configuration of this property and the unique configuration of the road uh, here creates a condition where that setback dives really deeply into the backyard. Really restricts, um, the usable area within the setbacks for the backyard space. If we didn't have, if, if the road came in at a 90-degree, we wouldn't have this issue with the backyard setback. In this location, we were fine. Uh, the pool is entirely behind the structure of, the proposed pool location is entirely behind the structure of the house. Um, so it's not in a side yard as per se, but definitely in a space that would be considered a backyard area. So those were, are what we believe our setbacks are, which is a topographic challenge, the shape of the lot, and, and being on a corner lot, that comes in on a weird angle. Um, we did have two neighbor letters that came in that expressed concerns on the property, which we would like to specifically address. Um, one neigh, one neighbor mentioned a question of drainage. That neighbor is sub, about 400 feet down Short Hill Lane on the other side of the road, and she was saying in the letter that water is going off of my client's property, down the road, crossing the street, or driveway into the patio. Um, I was out there this morning because I wanted to look at this, so I could actually refer to it. Um, this is a view looking down Short Hill Lane. Um, this is the corner of our property, this is the, be directly behind us. Um, and this was water coming off of our property. It's a hilly property, water comes off it, that's what drainage does. Um, water, the road is crowned in this area, so the water is coming off the property, following the curb line, and you can see down by the mailbox here, there's a catch basin. Um, the water was all flowing into the catch basin and not continuing beyond that point. So, if a neighbor 400 feet down the road is worried about drainage coming off of our property, crossing the road, it's clearly not water that's coming from our property. It's coming from somewhere else, and really, it's not an issue on this property. Or for this project. Um, several of the neighbors were concerned about views into the back of the yard from both Short Hill Lane and adjacent properties. We've provided a thorough planting plan, which will be along the back of the property. Um, and then up Short Hill Lane with a combination of arborvitae's, we have limited space, and on the corner, some rhododendrons to match what's already out there. Uh, there was also a concern about one of the neighbors, about views into the pool equipment, which is alongside of the garage. Uh, we've provided a four-foot, six-inch-high solid board fence to enclose the pool equipment. And that's gonna do two things for us, it's gonna, one is going to limit views of the pool equipment from Short Hill Lane and any other adjacent properties, and for my client. But the solid board fencing will also direct the sound vertically as opposed to horizontally. So any noise coming off of the pool equipment for motors or filter, filtering equipment will go vertically as opposed to that will significantly reduce any noise off the property from that. Um, there was concern about um, use of our property, um, and that the clients will have parties for their children and have people over, and we have, this will increase noise on the property from daily, everyday use. It's been there three and a half years, no complaints from any neighbors. Um, there are noise ordinances within the town of Fairfield that limit noise till 10 o'clock at night, but on that, before that, you're kind of fair game. I know this board is very, very familiar with noise issues in Fairfield's. Um, uh, my clients are not noisy people. Um, there was one concern, which was unrelated to the pool project or the location of the pool, about a street sign being secured by the police on their property. Um, my, my clients, once they were made aware of it, clean that up, so the sign is visible. Uh, there were concerns about people speeding through the neighborhood. That's not anything that's related to the location of this pool or this project. There's a concern about people parking in front of a fire hydrant, again, that's beyond our control. The police can come by and tow cars if they want. Hopefully they don't. Um, but those were questions that were beyond our control and not really related to the project. Um, the closest neighbor that we have is behind this project. Um, and she had a concern about the wall along her property line. This is a view showing that area. This area on our proposed project would get cleaned up. Um, there would be a new fieldstone retaining wall would be part of the project. Um, that would be much better looking than this sort of rubble that's out there now. Um, and then new landscaping would be installed in front of the plant, both in front of the wall and on top of the wall, to sort of soften and mitigate it a little bit. We believe this will be a much improved condition over what exists there today, what the neighbors are looking at. Um, and we're also willing to work with the neighbor if they say, you know, we don't like those plans, we'd like something else. Be to work with them on that, to make sure that it's something that's both appealing to both properties. And with that, that is pretty much the extent of our presentation. To answer any questions you have, or address any specific concerns that you might have that we have not addressed.
Board, have any questions?
I have.
Go ahead, Christine.
Um, where are you putting the pool today? You're saying has the least amount of topography in terms of being on a slope.
Correct.
Can you tell me, if you moved it into an area which wouldn't require a variance, what is that slope? And what is the real difference even financially?
Um, let's take a look at that. Looking at the backyard, um, our proposed pool is in this area where, I don't know if you can see me, I like highlighting on the screen. Um, we could move the pool into this middle area. Um, we think there might be some, like, cul-de-sacs or something underneath that area, because it's sort of oddly humped. Uh, so we, we could move it back there, would require a little bit more work. Um, it's definitely gonna impact these trees along the back of the property line much more. Um, and it would be closer to this neighbor in terms of proximity of the pool to that, that neighbor, and a more of an impact on them. The other area would be all the way in the back of the property. I have a picture back there. Uh, back in this corner, um, this is a little deceiving because there's a lot more slope to it. Again, that would be much more impact to both the neighbor uphill and the neighbor downhill. This area would require retaining walls on both the uphill side and the downhill side. Um, and anytime that we look to do work such as this with retaining walls and building, we try and balance out the cut and the fill, so that we're not exporting material off the site, but we're actually making good use of the site. And in New England, time you put a shovel in the ground, you're gonna hit rock. Um, so, we'll, in this location, we'd be putting a retaining wall on the uphill side to create that levelish area, which has a potential for rock, we're also excavating down deeper below the existing surface condition, um, again, exposing ourselves to more rock removal, et cetera.
The first area you showed us, that when you showed the door, another slide, you said it would not impact the neighbor, but it wouldn't, in terms of, you wouldn't need a variance, is that correct?
Um, this is a view looking down.
The other one, can you go back to the first one you showed me of the backyard where the back door was there?
That is where, this is where we're proposing the pool.
Right, but you had a slide before, right there. You said you could put the pool there.
That's our proposed location.
But that's, you need a setback for.
That's where we need the variance for the setback.
Is there a place on the property, show me a place you could put it where you wouldn't need a variance, if you don't mind?
No, it's fine, this is why we're here, to discuss all this. So this is a view looking from, um, the upper part of the backyard, down back towards our proposed location. Um, there's this area here where we could turn the pool 90 degrees and kind of cram it in here. Um, again, these trees would be impacted, we'd probably have to take them out. We do believe that there's some cul-de-sacs underneath here, but we couldn't find records for that.
That retaining wall would be needed if you put it?
Still need retaining walls, um, to do that between, sort of at this end of, at the, at the street end of the pool, we would need a retaining wall there, and we would need a retaining wall on the, the neighbor's property line, where there's already a retaining wall. Um, so we would need a retaining wall there. The other thing is, we're concerned about safety on this project. My clients have small children, they're expecting another one. Um, this location or anything at this end of the property is off the main living areas of the house, uh, where the kid's playset is, where the family patio is. Our proposed location has access to one interior door, one door that accesses the house, that can be easily cordoned off inside the house. So from a safety standpoint, with the children, it's a much preferred location, and it isn't as disruptive to the overall use of the property.
Thank you.
That answered your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I thought I had one, I can't remember what it is. I'm just gonna pretend that Christine asked a great question, it was the one I was gonna ask. No, anybody else?
We need to hand out our, our petitions.
Yep.
We also did get three letters from neighbors in support of the project. Oh, we provide those now, or?
They've been provided in our email, so everybody has them.
Okay, great, so, we do have support from the project, we have our petitions, everything, yes.
Uh, so there is no existing non-
There is no existing non-conformity on this property.
Okay. I, used by part of your application that talks about zoning requirements existing and proposed, and I don't see the 13 feet showing anywhere in that grid. It's this grid in the application that talks about existing conditions and proposed?
That's from the surveyor.
That's the survey, yeah.
That's from the surveyor.
So that does not reflect your proposal, is?
Well, it does, in blue, the blue is the proposal.
Where is the, where is the?
The 17 and a half feet?
It's actually 20.
Right, it's, he took that dimension off of the property line, where it's a street line setback as opposed to a property line setback. So, from the street line, we're 28.6 or 28.4 feet. Um, as opposed to from the property line, which is a 17.6 feet. Um, setback is 40 feet from the street line, and we're at, we're resting probably 12-foot variance in that to get to 18 points. Or 28.6 off the street line.
I, I guess, I just, I'm not seeing it here, because everything is the same, existing and proposed.
Certainly update the zoning chart and provide that. If that's a, a
question? When do you, when do you, if you scroll up to the, uh, to the site, to the site plan?
This is the site plan right here.
Yeah, so if you go up to the grid, what Joe's referring to is in the proposed conditions, he's not, he doesn't see the, uh, where the 17.6 proposed condition would be.
All primary, this is all the primary stuff. There, there is no separate zoning grid proposed, because this is an accessory structure, right?
They don't have a separate chart. They don't have a separate chart, okay, gotcha. Sweet, I learn something new every day.
Thank you.
Usually nine or 10 times a day in these meetings. Um, so, good to know, good note, good question.
That's a question.
Any other questions?
So, clarify for me, what is the regulation requiring accessory setback?
So, an accessory setback on a corner lot, um, the accessory setback has to meet to the front yard, street line setback on a corner lot. Uh, if this was an interior lot, there's a 10-foot setback, but this is not an interior lot. Uh, so we're sort of burdened with an additional 30 feet here.
40.
40 foot, sorry, yeah.
Corner lots generally stand as a hardship in our
And this is an odd corner, because it comes in on an acute angle, which really, if you look at that, you can see that setback really diving very deeply into the rear yard behind the house.
Okay, um, no other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the room or online who would like to speak in favor of this application? And the board will note that there were several emails, uh, that came in, two of them late this afternoon, that were in, I describe as resounding support for the application, from surrounding neighbors. Uh, anyone in the room like to speak in opposition to the application, either here or online? And again, the board will note that there were voices of opposition, uh, to the, to the application, uh, as answered by the presenter. Seeing none, hearing none, present or online, close the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You do the same. And we are now on to general docket number one. 680 Old Academy Road, map 171, parcel 9A. Discussion of pending litigation, FAF versus zoning board of appeals, 680 Old Academy Road. Uh, to consider entering a stipulated judgment sustaining the appeal. So, board recognizes town attorney.
My name is Wilson Carroll, I'm with Conan Wolf at 1115 Broad Street Bridgeport. We spoke last month regarding the reselling, entering a stipulated judgment, sustaining the appeal. And I had presented you with the case law that establishes pretty conclusively by our appellate and Supreme Courts, that there's no hardship on this application. I'm happy to go through that again, or to answer any questions you may have, um, to the extent that I think that that would be helpful. As it remains my recommendation that you vote to authorize me to enter into that.
So I'll ask the board, does anybody require or wish to have any- So I'll ask the board, does anybody require or wish to have any clarification or just a brief summary by the town attorney on what we are stipulating, which is effectively an agreement between the parties and a request by the court to overturn our own judgment. Previous matter.
I mean, we're not, sort of understand it, we're not saying we're not overturning. You phrased it away, it wasn't like we were overturning, we were just sustaining the appeal. It's semantics.
Functionally the same.
Same thing.
It's, yeah, it's the same thing.
The history of this application.
Would you mind?
Yeah. Please tell me about, I know the, it was once two properties became one, now they want to.
Exactly.
They denied it at some point?
The ZBA approved it, so it approved it. This is an appeal from an approval.
Okay.
Prior to the amendment to the regulations that prohibited flag lots by requiring frontage, these lots had been merged. And now the application was to re-subdivide the properties and to this zero frontage flag lot, which is no longer, but fairly recent appellate and Supreme Court case law in the state makes it clear that a desire to re-subdivide property is self-created hardship that cannot support the granting of variance. So, and I said last month, and I'll say again, you know, to the extent if you were to vote, if you were to deny this request, I'm happy to write a brief, you know, we'll advocate as hard as we can for the board. But given the state of current case law, it's our recommendation that we enter the stipulation.
Which you just might, so the ZB, the original ZBA did what? What did they, they approved the subdivision or they disapproved?
We approved.
We approved their, to merge it back or to, that's what I meant?
Subdivide.
Yeah.
So they, the planning and zoning commission would have been the one to have merged the lots initially.
Okay.
And then this board then approved the application for variance to allow for a re-subdivision, but there's not been a re-subdivision yet.
So, so we approved it and then it was taken to court? The judge said we were wrong?
No, so we are in the process of, so I would have to file a brief arguing why a petition should be upheld on around May 1st.
Right.
But given the state of the case law, it's our recommendation that we not spend the time and resources to rip those briefs, attend a hearing and make those statements.
All right, thank you.
Got you.
Two questions. If we stipulate to this, in the applicant deal?
So the applicant is a party to the appeal, so they would have to agree and they have agreed.
Oh, okay, all right, so they, all right. Everybody, everybody will be happy if, basically if.
Well, everyone agrees.
Okay.
But given the nature of the board, you would have to vote to authorize me to enter into that. I can't, whereas we only have one person to get it.
I understand the why, I just was wondering of the consequences if we approve your recommendation. And the second thing is, is there any legal requirement that the people voting today have heard the original application?
Not that I'm aware of.
That one I checked.
Well, okay, I, I mean, to me, it could have, but I'm, if we're being told no, that's fine.
I mean, as long as you understand what I heard and what is occurring now.
Okay.
That's the request for summary. Having heard the summary, I am inclined to just call for a simple vote and not wait for the executive session on this one. So we can release the town attorney and stop paying him.
Okay with that?
Yeah, we can. Do it if we want. So, we're going to do it. And I will call for a vote. I need a motion to, how do I put this? Motion to, motion to agree to stipulated judgment. At least, second?
Second.
Joe seconds. Christine, you're first.
Yes. Yes.
No? Yes. Yes, I am a yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your time. Please clock out on your way. Guess they don't want to hang out to find out if they won later.
Kids.
Yeah, I know. So let's go.
Each one individually before we wait.
Technically we could.
I understand, I was just.
They've been in a bunch of them where they actually do that.
Kevin had done that a couple of times.
I was only doing it because I'm assuming we were paying him hourly to get that done and he was going to hang out one way or another, so. So.
Sure, he's still on the clock.
Ah, sure. He's on the, he's actually on the clock until he gets his office again, but that's billable hours and not my problem. Okay, so number two is 15 Warner Hill Road, map 177 parcel 201. Petition of Joseph and Alisa Ryan for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4. Reduce the street line setback from 50 feet, currently 39.2 feet, proposing 49.4 feet. Permission to legitimize a construction error. Premises double A zone.
Hi, my name's Rob Daly, I'm the builder, Midland Contracting Group. Mind if I hand some pictures?
Do your address first and?
So our hardship today, I'm.
No, do your, what's the address of your company or?
Oh, the address of my company is 140 Midland Street, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 6605. Obviously, the property address is 15 Warner Hill, Joseph and Elise Ryan, the owners. Yes, it's, our hardship today is just a builder's error on my, 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 and my team's. What happened when we built it, we actually designed this, we knew that we were right on the 50 foot. Sent everything back, the second story addition and the front, the first story of the front wall of the bathroom and entry of the mudroom. There's also an overhang. Let's take a, chase so you guys can see.
Sure.
Actually, we didn't, we didn't even realize that we had an error until we got the survey done and I actually called the zoning department and they were like, you have an issue. We went back to the surveyors, figured it out. What we think happened is in that five foot section that I circled on, on the picture that I showed you, we marked the line, I think what happened, my framing contractor put the backside of the plate where the line was instead of the front of the plate, built it, finished it, finished the bathroom, finished the whole project. Made the realization afterwards, so it would entail us ripping up the bathroom, moving the wall back 5 inches. I feel terribly, backstory with our company, we've been in the town since 56. My family, I'm third generation, this is the first time I ever had to do this, so it's very embarrassing. And I feel terribly for my clients because, you know, obviously they had nothing to do with it. We redesigned the project to make sure we were behind the setback, so it's, it's really just me. My crew making a mistake. At the end, where we are now, so we're asking for again, for that five foot section. We've had all neighbors, we've had people that have asked, that said they would write, you know, floor, nobody opposed. We've got overhang, which is compliant, overhang's about four feet over that section. So it's not even hard, that's why I think where we got confused and we're going to pick up on it until the end. And it's really hard to pick up on from the road at all. So that's where we are now.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, how can you fix it?
We have to rip the wall down, move the toilet over the four inches, rebuild the wall, re, set the blues along the front patio, the electrical.
But the only, it's only four inches, right? So couldn't you just get this, these stairs?
It's not the stairs.
Just that one section of wall.
It's literally the front of the wall.
Yeah.
Literally.
But that means that every time you build something going forward, it was off and no one remeasured any time, because usually you're always measuring footprints.
We did, so if you look at the doorway, we're jobs. So that's back to 24, well, it's actually six inches back from the setback. And like I said, I think what happened, when we measured it, we actually had it marked by the surveyor. We placed our plate, my framing contractor, instead of placing the front of the plate here, he put the back of the plate. And we're, obviously with such only one wall, so it was framed in like a couple hours, I think, at that point, when it was rough framing. It kept going.
When you were in the building, everything, everything must have been off because this wall was off. Like when you're making the footprint of the bathroom, when you're making everything back, everything was wrong.
Before, I, you know, the four.
That's true though, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. I mean, if we.
The whole time that everything was wrong?
I really did, because we, you know, after you do renovations, you modify stuff. So it's like, you know, a bathroom that you might see.
Bathroom's wrong, the back's wrong, like every room was off.
Your four inches, it's like.
Yeah, but everything was off, right?
Technically, no.
Yeah, I mean.
At the, at the end of the day, I think the.
The same size that you originally, is it? Is it?
Square footage, square footage where.
Better?
Yeah.
Square footage though, in the interior, I think it's basically the same.
It's like actually taking a box and just sliding it.
Right, but everything was off. But they didn't realize the toilet.
Look at the plan, the plan didn't get bigger, the plan stayed the same.
It stayed the same, it was just, yeah, and not only that, I think you're saying during the project.
They made it five inches deeper as well as five inches forward. They would have seen it, but I think what they did based on when I did my inspection, that the, the box actually just entirely slid forward five inches, which wouldn't. Yeah. Because you're looking at a plan that's, we'll call it 10 by 10, the plan is 10 by 10.
Right.
And it didn't turn out to be when they put their tape down, 10 by 11.
Right. It was still 10 by 10, because it was just started at the wrong place.
Exactly correct.
As, as you described.
And, yeah, and have, once again, obviously when you do renovations, certain wall, interior walls move and stuff. Signing, so once we shifted this wall an inch of the interior and then the dimensions change anyways, you kind of, you know, you lose it, so. And it's actually a really lovely powder room, so.
Right with your.
But I, it was 100% my, my, my framing crew and myself, like I said, I think we just put the plate on the, on the line.
On the line.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in the room here to ask any speak approval? Online, seeing none, hearing none, anyone here to speak in opposition? Here online, seeing none, hearing none, call this to a close. Thanks very much. Number three. 1132-1140 Post Road, map 141 parcel 92, petition of Scarsdale. Guys? I don't want to screw up the recording for Jody. Apparently we do that a lot. Parcel 92, petition of Scarsdale Parking Triangle LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 28.6.12, to reduce the required parking spaces for a restaurant by two, permission to establish a restaurant. Permission is, premises is CDD Zone.
Online, Mr.?
It's online and driving apparently.
How you guys doing?
It won't take away points for safety.
I'm not technically driving.
Gotcha, that's better. And he's not there, there we go.
My name's Bard Klagerman, I'm representing the ownership for 1132 Post Road. As you mentioned, we're trying to put a restaurant in one of our vacant spaces. It's a Wild Rice, who used to occupy space in the town on the other end of town a few years back. And because of the regulations, we are two spaces short to, to meet the requirement for him to have what he wants. It's, it's going to be mostly a takeout restaurant, but he wants to have four tables of four seats as a combo, mostly takeout, but little bit of sit-down. And because of that, we are no longer within the, within the as-of-right spaces for that purpose. So requesting a variance to be able to put the restaurant in with the four tables and, and four seats, being short two spaces. One thing I noted in the application, our main tenant on the first floor is Chef's Table and Chef's Table's busiest hours are morning and lunch. And Rice, as this lieutenant will be called, their biggest business is, is later in the afternoon and the evening, it's going to be takeout Japanese food. So I don't think there should be much overlap as far as the space is being used by the two biggest users of spaces that are building at any given time.
All you got?
What's that?
That it?
That's all I got.
All right, any questions from the board?
I do.
Go right ahead.
How many, how many parking spaces are there now? Are there, are there eight?
There's tw-.
Twenty-nine?
At the building, that's right, they wrap around.
It goes behind the building? Oh, there it is, I see it, I see it. Okay.
Um, can I ask, actually, maybe this is to Matt. When there's, Matt, when there's 29 spaces in a building with all different uses, how are they looked at? Because obviously, how many spaces would this restaurant need?
They're required to have eight.
But there's 29.
Right.
So how do you figure out who uses what and how, just?
We don't identify each space as one's independent space, it's just a total based on the use of the building.
Okay, so he's, why does he say he's too short then? Because there's 29?
Because the original tenant, their space was allocated for six. He needs eight based on his use, so he's too short of what he's required to have.
Maybe I'm asking my question right, like, do you know what?
So each space, even though there's 29 spaces there, each use is required a specific number of spaces. So the number of spaces that the previous tenant was allotted was six.
Because they're all.
Changing the seating capacity.
So retail use is one per 200, they had 1,200 square feet, they're required to have six parking spaces.
Right, right.
Under regulations, they're coming in to use the space as part takeout, part sit-down. Their calculated parking space is based on the way that we do our math, is, adds up to a total of eight required for that space.
And the rest are all used, that's what I'm trying to say.
Whether they're used or not, that's just what's required for his.
Right, but if they weren't all used, he would have plenty. Like if he had a tenant leave?
If a tenant, but that space is still allocated for a specific use.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the confusion is that when you add up all these specific uses in the building, it comes up.
He needs 29.
You're hiring 31 with this new use.
They're meaning 13 spots are used by other businesses. Right, that's what I just wanted to understand. And can I ask another question? Do you have a favorable letter from Chef's Table?
We do, they signed, they should have signed in the.
Recognize their address, so this is Jamie?
The only, the only people with worse handwriting than doctors are chefs, so.
Can you tell me who is on this application, is Chef's Table the petition?
Let me confirm.
Because I have Andrea Jefferson and Jamie Stratton. One is 1096 Post Road, which 1096 Post Road is the Sitco Station?
Correct.
Yeah, and Jamie Stratton is an employee, because that's owned by Global. That's probably not a correct signature, just so you're aware of that. He's the manager. All right, well, but probably the letter needed to be sent to Global. But who is the next one? Who's Andrea Jefferson?
I believe.
I believe Andrea is actually a woman who pumps gas there. And I say that because my company used to own this gas station. It doesn't anymore. But I believe Andrea is a fuel attendant at this location.
We lost him anyway.
Jamie Stratton. I think he's the manager, then she, she works there.
So did he say that Chef's Table was on board with this? I can't imagine why.
I thought they were.
Yeah, I mean, which, I mean.
But why?
Said it that.
But it'd be nice to see that.
So it'd be great to see that, but it's also not required for the.
No, but, but you talk a lot about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, do you have something that Chef's Table is good with this? Because this, you have it signed by a gas station attendant and a manager of the gas station.
Are both, those are both related to the gas station?
Yes.
I wasn't the one that had the signature, so I can get one from Rich. Rich Hurstfeld owns Chef's Table. He's actually good friends with Henry, who owns Wild Rice and, and Rich recommended Henry to.
I don't know if we need that, but I'm just saying that it would be nicer to have that.
Yes, it would, it would have been, it would have been good to have. I'm all about the community agreeing.
Signed by two people who work at the gas station.
Doesn't make a lot of sense. At the, all right, so at the end of the day, the only thing it could do is bring them more business anyway. All right, so are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in the room wish to speak in favor of this application or online? Seeing none. Seeing none and hearing none, anyone in the room or online wish to speak in opposition? And since the applicant's the only one online, I'm guessing that's a no. Uh, um. All right, I'm gonna close this application, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, what, when do we hear a, uh, what the, what the result is?
You can call the zoning office tomorrow.
Appreciate it, thanks so much, guys.
Just, or you can stay online and you can watch us vote in the executive session.
Got it, appreciate it.
Two. Yeah, we got two more applications left, so you can hang out if you want.
Thanks so much.
You got it.
Bye.
So, again, we'll close that application, we are on to number four. One ten Farmington Avenue, map seven, parcels six-three and six-four. Uh, petition of William Crunavell, uh, no, that's Cruvanel, sorry. For a variance in zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four. To reduce the street line setback on a corner lot from thirty feet, currently twenty-four point three feet. Proposing twenty-four point three feet in section five dot two dot five, to increase the total lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty-one point four percent. Proposing twenty-one point four percent, permission to construct a second floor and, uh, front dormer. And to legitimize the current lot coverage. Premises is A zone. Introduce yourself.
My name is William Cruvino, I'm the owner of, uh, one ten Farmington Avenue, and I'm just gonna read the, the hardship to make it easier on me. Uh, so we, uh, wish to construct a dormer. If the house is to expand our cape car long to allow. We're on the second floor, my home was constructed nineteen forty-nine and a pre-existing non-conforming, as we are bound by, uh, two street lines. And the existing house is within the setback, I find it for both street, street lines. There was also a screen porch that was built in nineteen eighty-two and the lot covered, uh, calculation was not done, uh, correctly. And we need to legitimize the overage from the construction. I request dormer, it's not adding any additional coverage.
Okay.
We'll be able to do it.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Just to confirm that we're not, the application is not anticipating increasing any non-conformity.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, well, let's just make sure we know there isn't, but anyone in the room wish to speak in favor of the application or online? Seeing none, hearing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, either here or online, careful how you raise that hand. Uh, let's see, uh, seeing none, hearing none. Was this that application? And for the home stretch. Number five, one fifty, Alamar Drive, map seventy-four, parcel eighty-six. Petition of Jonathan Russell for a variance of the zoning regulation. Section five dot two dot four to reduce the side and street line setbacks from fifteen feet and forty feet, currently sixteen point six feet and twenty-eight point five feet. Proposing fourteen point one feet and twenty-five point three feet. And section five dot two dot five to increase the lot coverage from fifteen percent, currently sixteen point one percent. Proposing seventeen point five five percent, permission to construct a one-story and two-story additions. Uh, premises is R three zone, go ahead.
Good afternoon, I am Jonathan Russell, the owner of the house in question, it's one fifty Palomar Drive. Looking to do an expansion above the garage, there's already a single, uh, a small room above the garage. That essentially into a master suite, not changing the number of bedrooms, but, uh, adding another bathroom. In order to do that, I'm proposing a cantilever, um, towards one neighbor's property that encroaches on, um, the existing setback. The house is, uh, was built in nineteen forty-eight, the lot is currently non-conforming, the house is closer to the. Street than, than would be conforming as it stands and as it was built. The houses in R three are typically, um, the lots rather are typically twenty thousand square feet minimum. Lot is twelve, a little under thirteen thousand square feet as, as it stands. And, uh, again, the front is seventy-five feet on ours and the typical lot in R three is a hundred feet of frontage. So there's, the hardship I'm suggesting is that the lot is non-conforming to the existing zone. And I'm looking to just make a, a pretty modest, um, expansion. There are probably a dozen houses built exactly like this, they were kind of cookie cutter back in nineteen forty-eight. The bulk of them have been blown out or expanded in some way, but all of these houses are non-conforming lots to start with. I, I've covered everything, um, it's a pretty simple, a pretty modest addition, I, I'm proposing that I'm on a non-conforming lot. That's the reason it's hard to do anything without becoming a little more non-conforming, this is actually my.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none and hearing none, one in the room or online wish to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none and hearing none. Anyone in the room or online wish to speak in opposition? This application? Seeing none, hearing none, very much. But here, wanna take three minutes, anybody to do anything, or shall we?
Three minutes.
You may have three minutes. Absolutely, we will re-adjourn when Katie comes back. And just a reminder for all those in attendance, this is not a time for anyone to. Speak up, speak out, or be heard, this is the board's time to. Discuss what you have presented to us and vote on the pending applications. So I'm going to go ahead and move forward with that. Number ten on our continued docket obviously was withdrawn on to number two. One thirty Lakeview Drive, map seventy-three, parcel seventy-four, petition of Anthony Alexander. Uh, Bowman, for a variance of the zoning regulations. Section five dot two dot four to reduce the street line setback from forty feet, proposing seventeen point six feet. Permission to construct an in-ground pool premises R three zone, need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Katie, motion seconded by Elise. And discussion if we would.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
After you just, for the book, cause I'm looking at some of the, you know, looking at some of the neighbors that were in opposition. I think it's important to look at them from an objective standpoint rather than an emotional standpoint, and also is what they're talking about relevant, so. For example, are noise, visual disturbance?
Nothing to do with us. So, so, no, they have nothing to do with us, and that, but I would also say, I mean, even if you wanted to be in the most extreme case, visual disturbance. Like, we're, everything we're looking at here is relative to the numbers, but has a visual impact. But no, it has nothing.
And same, like water runoff and erosion control, are those purview of our board?
Nothing to do with us.
So I, I mean, I'm looking at a couple of these letters, which you take seriously, but for example, the opposition talks about. Exceptionally large home, which is not the case, because it's below the allowed coverage and FAR. Talking about problems with fire hydrants being blocked, to be an issue, not our issue.
Not our issue.
Cars driving fast down Lakeview.
Not our issue. Correct.
So unfortunately, most of the objections in the letters really have nothing to do with the request for the variance.
Correct.
Is my opinion.
There's virtually no bearing on anything that we have to discuss.
So what I think, for me listening to this application. What mattered was being compliant. The, the topography is making it very financially difficult for them to be in compliance, and they are in a corner lot and subject to more setbacks.
I think they're also being as considerate as they can with the location based on trying to. Reduce proximity to some of their neighbors, uh, with the location, they said if they moved it. Back or all the way to the back, they would be closer to either of three of their neighbors.
Right, but they wouldn't need a variance.
Um, only one of the places I think they wouldn't need a variance, and that was the one.
Way to put this pool in without a variance.
Yeah, but I, I think what they've done is thoughtful enough, and especially with the greenscape plan. Um, I think they've taken everything into consideration. And they certainly have a valid hardship. As established by the corner lot and the, uh, and the topography. So it's certainly within our purview to grant. Any other discussion? Christine, you're first.
Uh, I'm gonna say the yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and we are all yeses, enjoy your pool. And we are on to our general docket. Number one, we took care of in the general session, so that's all taken care of. Number two, fifteen Warner Hill Road, map one seventy-seven, parcel two zero one. Petition of Joseph and Elisa Ryan for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four. To reduce the street line setback from fifty feet, currently thirty-nine point two feet. Proposing forty-nine point four feet, permission to legitimize a construction error premises is A zone, need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Katie, seconded, second, discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, so. If I'm understanding correctly, before all this began. The house was already too close. Missing, or is that not the case?
Yeah, I read it, it's not the case, it was fine, and then there was a, it's an error in the measurement and it, the addition, there, it's an after the fact.
I understand that, that they didn't, it didn't get built where they want, wanted to build it.
Yeah.
And that is.
The, the original, the original bill was an as-of-right bill, there was no variance granted to build this, it was just done.
So what, what, what's the, I don't understand the wording, currently thirty-nine point two, proposing forty-nine point four. Is that?
Go ahead. Current house is non-conforming to the street line. You see, the front of the house sits thirty-nine feet from the street line. So that's where you see the number thirty-nine.
Okay.
So it's currently not conforming to Warner Hill.
So did it come here for a, uh?
House is seventy years old. I don't think, I think at that point, uh, someone may have been different, um, but that's pre-existing non-conforming.
No, no, but I mean, the per, current, the current.
When they did the work.
They have needed to come here.
Uh, because the second floor they were proposing was gonna be fifty feet to the street line, which is what's required.
Right, so they were building it to the line. At the piece, of the piece of wood on the wrong side of the line, here we sit. Think he was. S- I think he was, uh, say, adequately admonished.
And it couldn't have asked.
And he feels bad, um.
I think this is all.
I'm still, I'm still confused procedurally, if, if the house is thirty-nine point two, if part of the house is thirty-nine point two from the. From a property line, um, and it's supposed to be fifty. They didn't have to come here to get the.
House is pre-existing, the house is already standing.
Right, right, but they, but, but to get a permit to do the construction that came in wrong, they didn't have to come here because they were, because the house was already. Close?
So anytime, uh, you do construction to a non-conforming dwelling, that is either not conforming to a street line or a sideline or rear line property. For the proposal to avoid, you need to come before this board is to make your addition compliant, under the regulations.
Okay, all right, okay, so.
Proposed to do.
All right, so what I'm trying to get to is, if, as a non-conforming. Exist, existing non-conforming property, if they'd come here, if they'd wanted to build it for not forty-nine point four, they would have had to come here.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna build it.
All right, they did.
I understand.
And they ended up doing.
I understand, so now after the fact, we look at it like they came here ahead of time and, and.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
That's exactly what we're doing, all right, we are legitimizing.
But we're, like, I'm trying to look at it from a different procedural.
There's, there's no, there's no different procedural, there's no prism through which to view this, other than. The construction company made an error.
Okay.
Causing a non-conformity, and we are going to legitimize that non-conformity, no foreshadowing.
But, but, but from my, my, my approval perspective. If. It's a, it's, it's a, a non-conforming. As it is, as, as, as it was before the, the construction began, so we routinely. Give approvals to non-conforming, construction on non-conforming properties, especially when it doesn't increase the non-conformity.
Yeah.
And, and that's really what I'm trying to get at from my own perspective to approve the application.
Whatever perspective you require.
Okay.
I would like to say that this is the smallest thing that's ever come before us, but it's not. It's also not the smallest error that we've ever forgiven, so. This is, to say it's, we've taken more time than this is worth is.
Well, it's a lot of money if you say no.
And, yeah, I don't, I don't, let's, let's fight it, shall we, Christine? Katie? Joe?
Yes.
Yes, have a nice day.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Off to number three, thirty-one thirty-two dash eleven forty, Post Road, map one forty-one, parcel ninety-two. Petition of Scarsdale Parking Triangle LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section two eight dash six dash twelve. To reduce the required parking spaces for a restaurant use by two, permission to establish a restaurant premises CDD zone. Need a motion to approve? I'm giving that one to Elise, second?
Second.
Eighty seconds, all right. Discussion please. Yes.
Reasonable.
Seems.
Chef's Table is the opposite of.
I'd like to ask you guys, um, have you sat here often and given variances for restaurants for not enough parking in Fairfield?
I don't think we've rejected one yet, in the five years I've been here.
So there's a precedent?
The precedent has nothing to do with what we do.
Well, that's actually not true.
You don't.
So I think zoning boards can create precedents.
No, TPZs may create some kind of precedence, because they're creating code, but in our board, we don't stand unprecedented, we take everything one.
I know, but I guess, I guess maybe I shouldn't have used that word, in the past, have you approved many restaurants part, aren't enough per zoning? Okay.
Especially in case, and I will say this, and, and relative to this application, especially when there are. Multitude of spaces around it, that can be leveraged by the business. Uh, especially in off-hours when the other ancillary businesses aren't open.
Okay, and I will just, just want to note though, it would have been nice if the actual neighbors were real neighbors. I, I don't, you know, having a petition signed by a tenant at a next door, I understand that. What he wants is probably gonna be fine, but it'd be nice when you come in front of the board that you do things correctly.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well, but, I mean, we have to, we have to, I think, we can, we should stipulate that. Reaching out to the neighbors is a, is a matter of course, but. The simple notification is, bears the requirement of law. So they don't technically have to get signatures from anybody, they simply have to post the notification and allow the public the opportunity to.
I know, but you said that before, you already said that, but what I'm seeing is, you know, it wasn't a very good petition.
It wasn't fantastic, but it was enough.
It really wasn't enough.
Um. Any other comment?
Just, I, I, I wouldn't be happy if I, if I didn't note the irony of Scarsdale Parking asking for a parking variance.
Agreed. Arney noted, Christine, you're first.
Yes.
Katie? Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries unanimously. Number four, one ten Farmington Avenue, map seven, parcel six-three dash six-four. Petition of William Cruvanel, right this time, for a variance. The zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four, to reduce the street line setbacks on a corner lot from thirty feet, currently twenty-four point three feet, proposing twenty-four point three feet. And the section five dot two dot five to increase the total lot coverage from twenty percent, currently twenty-one point four percent, proposing twenty-one point four percent. Permission to construct a second floor. Front dormer and to legitimize the current lot coverage, need a motion to approve?
I motion.
Christine motions, I need a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconds and discussion, please. I think Joe actually noted that we are exacerbating any non-conformity here. Um, it's a very simple and consistent request with what's in that area, from what I know of it. The other, somebody?
No increase in the lot coverage, just a little legitimizing.
No change. There's no change. So.
It's gonna impact anybody.
Christine?
Yes. Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Get the call on everybody. That's. Motion carries. And the last one of the day. One fifty Palomar Drive, map seventy-four, parcel eighty-six. Petition of Jonathan Russell for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four to reduce the side and street line setbacks from fifteen feet and forty feet, currently sixteen point six feet and twenty-eight point five feet, proposing fourteen point one feet and twenty-five point three feet and section five dot two dot five to increase the lot coverage from fifteen feet, uh, fifteen percent, currently sixteen point one eight percent, proposing seventeen point five five percent. Permission to construct a one-story and two-story additions. Premises is R three zone. Need a motion to approve?
My motion.
Need a motion to approve. Let's need a second.
Second.
Seconds and discussion, please.
Lots not conforming. Quick Facebook.
Yep.
Yeah.
Lots not conforming. The request is de minimis. Yeah, we got two. It's the same thing. It's a simple request. Christine?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and I am a yes. Here unanimously, I now got this entire session closed. Thank you all. Have a wonderful day.